Good afternoon. We're gonna call the Davidson County Board of Commissioners, meeting to order. Commissioner McClure has the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you lord for all that you do for us, the goodness that you do in our county and our state, and for the Board of Commissioners as well. You have always been there when we ask for your wisdom, and we do that again this evening. We would like to have the wisdom for any of the decisions that we might make, and we give you glory. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge your allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, we'd ask for y'all to bear with us. We've got some new iPads with Agenda software, so we're gonna be kinda learning tonight as we move through, but we'll vote verbally and make motions verbally in seconds, so...
Yeah, if y'all see all the screen up there and go blank, y'all need to go. I'm just kidding.
All right, recognition. Judge Hamilton and Judge Terry, thank y'all for being here this afternoon. Yep. Recognition of veterans, Mr. Shawes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have any veterans in the house tonight? If we do, would you please stand, be recognized?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you, uh, before you get sit down, if you've not gotten a pen, please come up and let me give you one of these veteran pens from the county. Judge Terry, will give you one? You know I'm gonna call you out, 'cause I know you're a veteran.
Good job, sir.
Thank you.
He's already got one. Thank you for your service, appreciate it. All right, thank you very much. Always nice to have some veterans in the house. Do I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Mazel?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Register for public address. We have a sign-up sheet right over here. If you'd like to sign up for public address, please do so. It's not for a public hearing, it's just for the public address. Adoption of the agenda. Mr. Smith has asked for a closed session for personnel and attorney-client be added, or to enter any other changes. Here, none. Can I have a motion?
Here are no other changes, Mr. Chairman. I'm making a motion that we accept the amended agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Has anybody signed up for public address there, Debbie? Jake Grimmer. Exotic animal keeping. How are you this afternoon?
I'm all right. How are y'all doing?
I'm great.
Um, I am an exotic animal keeper and a small business owner here in Davidson County, and the ordinance that y'all have for the animal keeping isn't completely clear on all sides of the table, and I just wanted to kinda propose something to where we can get together and make something to where it's fair on both sides, something where I can help with the education side of things, with letting y'all know what stuff is, how to address people that keep stuff, and what exactly it is, 'cause stuff is just kinda lumped in weird categories and left unclear all over the place, and I just wanna be able to keep my animals and help educate the public and just be able to enjoy things and not have to worry about doing something wrong with keeping animals that I love.
Have you reached out to planning and zoning?
Um, we have been reaching out to anybody and everybody that we can. I'm here with my business partner, and she's kinda the one that more or less contacts and reaches people and stuff, but we've been trying to do anything that we can with stuff, and anytime we call people, we don't get clear answers on what exactly to do or where to go. It's been a real struggle just to get to this point, to get in here, to stand in front of y'all, which is why I wanna try and see if we can do something to work together to make things a little bit more clear and easy for just the general public and everybody in general.
How do you wanna handle this, Mr. Manager? You want him to get with Mr. Crook?
Well, I think, I think the gentleman's come by, and he's already met with our county attorney's office. I believe this is the issue over some, is it some venomous snakes?
Venomous snakes and large lizards.
Yeah, so, and I, we may end up having to have more conversations with the county attorney's office, see if there's any, you know, I think a part of it is, have you been, have you been to sheriff's office to get some type of permit or something of that nature?
Yes, I have, I have filled out all of the proper paperwork that the county has asked for in the ordinance.
Right.
And I have even gone above and beyond and gotten everything microchipped, registered, insured, under a hundred thousand dollar insurance bond. I did everything as, as much as possible to dot my i's and cross my t's with stuff.
You haven't, you haven't received an okay or a permit yet, correct?
I have not received an okay or anything yet.
Okay.
Right now, as far as I'm, I know Lieutenant Howell is under investigation for stuff, for him giving out misinformation on things, and they have not accepted any new permitting process stuff that's gone in with animals yet.
Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, so, Jason Martin, our assisting county manager, and I met with Mr. Grimmer, and, you know, talk about the, um, the animal ordinance, and we're gonna, Jason and I have been looking at that issue, and so we will have some, some information to follow up with you on that matter, and, you know, and it's a follow-up on what Mr. Grimmer's asking about.
We'll just have to follow up. I, you know, I don't know what the law is, or none of us do, so they'll figure out what the law is, and I guess we'll go from there, so...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So I guess somebody will be in touch, uh...
Yes.
With this gentleman here.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
All right. I guess we'll start some zoning, Mr. Crook?
All right.
If you wanna work your way on up.
You wanna sit here, you wanna sit there?
I can move over.
We're just trying to keep employees.
Okay, yeah, I don't want him to run away either. Y'all got new tech.
He didn't treat you near as bad as Jason does when he has to go. So is everybody keeping up on their iPads pretty good at where they need to be?
I think.
What they need to vote for?
I still got it in front of me.
Do you see, can you see if we tried to vote?
Yes, I can.
Are we doing good?
Yes. I saw your vote.
Okay.
All right, we're on 7A now, so, and that has, they've withdrawn their, um, application.
Yeah, for everyone in the audience, Mr. Bill Barker that was scheduled to be heard tonight has officially withdrawn the application, his rezoning request, so it's gonna be taken off the agenda. No action will be taken, and it is officially withdrawn.
All right.
So on this, do you have to make a motion to withdraw it and then vote before you move on?
No, there's nothing for y'all to consider.
Gotcha. I gotcha.
Next is item 7B, rezoning request by Kent Presley and Tracy Presley in Tyro Township, containing 1.52 plus minus acres from RS to RA1. Mr. Crook?
Thank you. Um, we have a request by Kent G. Presley and Tracy R. Presley to rezone property located in Tyro Township, tax map 28, lots 44B and 44C, containing 1.52 acres more or less. Said properties are located on the north side of Guy Presley Road, approximately 560 feet west of the Michael Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RS, low intensity residential district, to that of RA1, rural agricultural district. Do we have these? Do we have this? That's okay. I certainly understand.
Yeah, we've been learning.
I bet. Isn't new tech fun? While we're waiting, if the board will indulge me, I would like to introduce our newest employee, Mr. Adam Flag. He's a new zoning officer with us. His mother worked in the tax department, Melissa Flag, for a number of years, and we're glad to have Adam on board. I wanted to welcome him aboard.
Adam, would you stand up, please?
Nice to meet you, Adam.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
I'll see you 30 years down a river.
All right, moving forward with Mr. Presley's request. If you divert your attention to the overhead, this is off of Michael Road. Guy Presley Road is here. This is, for lack of a better word, downtown Tyro is just off the map up here on 150. Mr. Presley is requesting that these two lots outlined in yellow be changed from RS, uh, low intensity residential district, to that of RA1, rural agricultural district. The line is not very clear on the map, but the RA1 RS line runs right here, comes here, and then comes back out here. So the road frontage, there's a corridor of RS along through there, and back off the road a little ways, it's RA1, and there's, there's some other double wides in here, but once we open the public hearing, I would ask Mr. Presley to come up and explain his request a little further.
Okay. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Presley, if you wanna come forward. How are you this afternoon?
Good. How are y'all doing?
Not bad.
Um, so the request is to change it from RS to RA, to include manufacturer housing. That's the request for those two properties.
Any questions?
To include, I didn't catch that, Mr. Presley. To include what?
Just to include those two properties that we're discussing.
You say anything about a manufacturer?
Yeah, manufacturer home.
A manufacturer home?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Are, are these for siblings, Mr. Presley?
This, uh, for my two daughters.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Uh, does anybody else in the audience wanna speak in favor or against this rezoning? All right, see you none. I'll close the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject, as we explained a little bit earlier, the property is contiguous to existing RA1 back here to the west. There's a double wide manufactured home here and here that's already in the RA1 district. Property's contiguous. There's a mixed use. It's predominantly single-family stick-built homes along Michael Road in that corridor, but there is some, some mixed uses in there. There's a very well-kept single wide right here on the property to the east. Since it is contiguous, it makes it compliant with Article 7 of the zoning ordinance, and the land development plan does recognize this as to grow residentially. Policy statements 6.1, 6.4, 6.5, 6.10, 7.1, and 7.4 support the, uh, the request. The planning board voted to approve this, five to zero, on July 16th, and staff would concur with the planning board and recommend the approval and adoption of the statement of consistency, please.
Okay. I'm gonna ask for a motion that includes a statement of consistency, and also you can vote on your tablet too, if you'd like, and we'll try this. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approve this based off the resolution on statement of consistency.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Everybody cast their vote. I'd say yes.
Yes.
Say aye. Any against? And then use your pad too, and we'll see if...
I'm ready for it since she got my, on the line.
I didn't get your vote.
I don't think mine pulled up.
I got your vote.
Oh, okay. You got mine?
I did not get Commissioner McClure's or Commissioner's vote.
Well, I got it. Reason you get mine, I didn't vote.
Okay, that's fine.
I did, and I forgot to send it.
Here we go, okay, bye.
These new iPads.
You got everybody except Mr. McClure's?
Yes, but Mr. McClure's, but he voted verbally, so I think okay.
All right. So can you tell us how that turned out?
That vote carries by, that motion carries by a vote of six, or seven, sixty, right?
Six zero.
Commissioner Mazel is back.
Jordan Valbers.
That's right, pretty good job there. We got the first one almost right. All right, item 7C, rezoning request by Jalen Mark 1 LLC, Ruby P. Patel in Boone Township, 10.94 acres from RA2 to Highway Commercial, HC.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a request by Jalen Mark 1 LLC and Ruby P. Patel to rezon property located in Boone Township, tax map 28, lots 4J and 4K totaling 10.94 acres more or less. Said property is located on the east side of South NC Highway 150, approximately 650 feet south of the Old Salisbury Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA2, rural agricultural district, to that of HC Highway Commercial District. Again, if you'll divert your attention up to the overhead, this is the NC Highway 150 interchange. This is the new interchange, Old Salisbury Road, I-85. The area that's been annexed by the city of Lexington's here to the south of this interchange. The properties in yellow are the two tracks that Mr. Patel is requesting to be rezoned, and this time, once we open the public hearing, I'd ask him to come up and explain his request further.
Okay, I declare the public hearing open. Would you come up, Mr. Patel? How are you this afternoon?
Um, so, uh, we do have two plans over here, that we wanted to build a travel plaza that can, um, serve the community for gasoline, electric charging, along with a little food, like a grab-and-go type of thing, and a nice, small facility that can help the local community along with the travelers on the road. So we are in the initial phase of planning, but that does require rezoning first of all, so we applied for rezoning.
Any questions from the board member from Mr. Patel?
Mr. Chairman, where's the driveway gonna be on this? I'm looking at it. I thought it was up on the 29th side, but it looks like it's down on the...
Right, exactly. So we are working with the Dollar General and the property owner or that are the Dollar General, and we have some sort of agreement, so our exit and entry will be right where is the Dollar General.
On 29th over there.
Yes.
Any other questions from Mr. Patel? All right, if you don't mind, Mr. Patel, have a seat there on the front row. We'll see if anybody else has anything to say. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or against this rezoning, please come forward. See you none. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Crook?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my research for this, I ran across something kinda interesting I wanted to share with you, you folks tonight. This apparently has always been a very popular intersection. This is a 1955 aerial photo, and it shows the remnants of what once was called Lakeview Speedway.
Wow.
This was, this was a, this was a NASCAR facility in 47, 48, and 49, I think. It operated for about three years.
Wow.
Um, this is, this is the Haynes, this is the 150 intersection in Old Salisbury Road here. This is Haynes, you know, garage there on the corner. I wanted to share that with you folks. They had all kind of events at this location. It was, it was, it was a big deal, so, uh, but yeah, Bill France and Zeb Little and Zeb Grubb and a bunch of, bunch of old Davidson County names were in the article. I just wanted to share that with the board.
Pretty cool, man.
Thought you guys would enjoy that. But, um, with respect to staff opinion and staff recommendation, the, uh... Um, but, um, with respect to staff opinion and staff recommendation, the, uh, the applicant's property sits directly north of the newly reworked I eighty-five and South NC Highway one fifty interchange. Said interchange was completed in twenty-twelve or twenty-fourteen as a full-service interchange. Prior to this reconfiguration, South NC Highway one fifty was only accessible from I eighty-five's northbound lane, and you could only exit to the southbound lane of I eighty-five. This factor alone would represent change to change of conditions. Um, the city of Lexington has annexed approximately seven hundred and fifty acres on the south side of the referenced interchange. That zoning, uh, on these properties is I for industrial zoning. The city's project would have a traffic pattern that would exit through the South NC Highway one fifty interchange. In staff's opinion, this proposed industrial development creates additional change to change of conditions. Um, the applicant's property is contiguous to the district he's seeking, which is HC Highway Commercial District. Uh, to the north is Dollar General and the Triple J Truck, the old Triple J Truck, uh, service there. Um, to the east is the old Shedtime property, which is limited industrial, and to the west is, is South NC Highway one fifty. Um, while the applicant's property has a negative easement along South NC Highway one fifty's frontage, it does, it does have a legal easement from Old Salisbury Road, and traffic will utilize, uh, that easement to connect by Dollar General to, uh, Old Salisbury Road or Old Highway twenty-nine. Um, this type of internal shared access is becoming more prevalent by NC DOT. Davison County's land development plan promotes this area as a growth corridor and a commercial and industrial center, and I have policies one, one-one, one-three, one-five, one-seven, one-eight, one-sixteen, one-seventeen, four-two, four-three, four-four, four-five, two, five-five, five-seven, and seven-four that support the request. Uh, staff feels the applicant's request is reasonable. Planning board approved this five to zero, uh, July sixteenth, and we would ask that the board do the same and adopt a statement of consistency.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve it and adopt the statement of consistency.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you use it on your, uh, my favor? Any opposed? Hear none. Should've carried six zero. Did you get everybody's vote in?
No, not yet. I'm missing yours.
Oh, you're missing mine? Or the motion by was Commissioner Shale. I don't know why that didn't come in. Mine, mine should've been...
Oh, I didn't do the motion?
Oh, you didn't do the motion?
That motion carries by a vote of six zero.
So, you got my vote, finally?
Commissioner McPherson's vote.
You get my vote as well? Okay, I don't know why it didn't come through originally, but maybe I ain't tapping them. All right, we'll move on to item D, seven D rezoning request by Mr. Hernandez-Romain and, uh, Sabero and Cheviero, Cheviero.
You're braver than I am.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Mr. Crook, will you introduce this application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have a request by Annabelle Hernandez-Roman and Demas Sabario, Mr. Sabario, to rezone property located in Reedie Creek Township, tax map nineteen, part of lot one E, containing two acres more or less. Said property is located down a private driveway off of Garren Drive, approximately a hundred and ten feet west of the Arnold Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA three, rural agricultural district, to that of CZ LI, conditional zoning, limited industrial district. Um, uh-oh.
I have to start back.
Okay, no problem. All right. If you'd please divert your attention to the overhead, um, on the, on the site map, this is off of Arnold Road. You got West Center Street Extension here, Arnold Road, um, and Arnold Road here. Uh, Garren Drive is a new, new, uh, platted subdivision, public, uh, public road. The property in yellow is the property, uh, that's being requested to be changed to CZ LI. The ordinance requires two acres, uh, that's why they're rezoning two, or requesting to rezone two of these three acres here. Um, the applicant also owns this residence here. They're not requesting to change that one at all, and, um, when we open the public hearing, I would invite them up to, uh, explain the application.
All right, I declare the public hearing open. If you want to invite, invite whoever's gonna speak up, and that'll be fine.
Ms. Rob, um, Ms. Hernandez, or Ms. Roman?
Whoever's gonna represent this rezoning. How are you this afternoon?
Hey, how are you? Um, yes, um, we're requesting to, to get our business registered as a junk, um, vehicles cars, um, and I, um, I guess I'm here to, um, to know the procedure or what do I have to do to, uh...
So, what type of business is this? I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Um, me, me and my husband, he has a tow truck, and he buy junk cars, and we buy, I mean, we sell parts, car parts.
At, at the planning board meeting, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, the applicant testified that they have a, they have the public in to, like a one oh nine U-Pull-it sort of thing, where they come in and take parts off. They also take parts off theirself. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, yeah, that's correct.
Uh, they take parts off theirself, and I think they sell them the Facebook Marketplace or things like that, so...
Yes.
They're, they're bringing in junk motor vehicles to scrap, and they're selling them in many, the parts in many different ways.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So, that's what they've been doing up until now, up until this request on that same piece of property?
Yes, Commissioner Watford, the, uh, this actually came to our office as a complaint.
Okay.
It, it started out as a complaint. It was anonymous complaint, and our staff went out and verified that there was, uh, junk motor vehicles on the property. They made contact with the applicant, and the applicant requested, uh, is there a way to try to make this use legal? And we, of course, advised them that they, to attempt to come through this procedure, and that's why we're here this afternoon.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions by the board members?
What is this near? I mean, is it near, like, the West Center Street end?
Uh, it's, it's kind of, um, it, it's very close to the West Center Street end, um...
And Wallster Lane in there?
Wallster Lane's right here, Commissioner Shale.
Okay.
Right there, and it's just up from there.
Okay.
Any questions for this, this lady? Okay, if you want to, you can have a seat on the front row there and, or wherever you'd like. So, any discussion between the board members here? What, what was the, uh, planning board's, uh, recommendation here?
The planning board's recommendation was to deny it five to zero. And there was some opposition present at the planning board meeting. I don't know if they're here tonight or not.
Okay, anybody wishing to speak in favor or against, uh, please come forward. If you don't mind, state your name and all that in the microphone, please.
I am Carrie Hooser. My husband, Daniel, and I own lot fourteen. Um, our lot includes the easement, which is their driveway to access their residential property, as well as the area they're trying to rezone. Um, we weren't aware, they were operating a business at the time we purchased our home a little over a year ago, um, and since then, we have been concerned about the rate of traffic coming in and out. Um, it seemed to be a little bit more than residential, but we didn't really question it, um, until the zoning came up, and it became very prevalent what was going on back there. Um, we've not been happy with the noises that we've heard, but at the same time, just new to the community, trying to keep peace, not really complaining too much. Um, but my concerns is if they do, if this does get approved and it does become a business, um, my home is right there. I've had people come to my home trying to purchase parts because it's not clear that their residence is behind us. Um, I also have a young child and would like to continue to grow my family, and the rate of traffic going in and out is concerning when we're trying to enjoy our property and play in our yard. Um, and then it's also concerning if, um, it gets approved and DOT gets involved, what are their expectations on making this a road usage for business? Um, because it is a thirty-foot easement, and if they need to expand wider, um, you're going to encroach on my property, um, and that's, I don't want to give up my property. Um, so, that's our opposition to it, um, just concerning about it being open to the public and not really a residential kind of private thing if this does get approved.
I got you. Any questions for this young lady? All right, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or against this rezoning?
My husband, uh, Chris and I are also, we're on lot thirteen, um...
Now, would you state your name for the record?
My name is Jasmine Carter. Our lot is also lot thirteen, and their scrapyard happens to be directly behind my house. Um, I also agree with the traffic. I have an autistic son, and it's not ideal for us to have that much traffic in our neighborhood. Um, that is where I'm opposing it. I'm also kind of opposing it on a standpoint of what does that do to my property values and having a nuisance building, um, business behind us.
All right, any questions for this young lady?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. Um, and you can probably answer both of these.
Okay.
Your house and your neighbor, thirteen and fourteen, are they towards the back where the numbers are, or are they closer up front?
Um, closer up front, mine is.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or against? It's your last chance. Hear none, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Crook?
Thank you, sir. Um, the applicant, the applicant requests to rezone to a CZ LI, conditional zoning, limited industrial district, to locate a junkyard, automobile salvage yard on site. The applicant proposes the following conditions: property can only be used as a junkyard, lighting will be downward facing and won't be facing other properties, fencing will be six feet tall and opaque and may, uh, be a mixture of chain link with slats or wood fencing around the perimeter, and a commercial driveway, driveway permit will be obtained. This rezoning initially came to our office as a complaint. Our office investigated the complaint and verified a junkyard and salvage business taking place on site. As an attempt to make the above identified use legal, the applicant submitted this rezoning request. The applicant's property is accessed off of a new subdivision road for West Glen Subdivision. West Glen is a fourteen-lot subdivision recorded on nine twenty, twenty twenty-two. As of today's date, all of the lots on Garren Drive and West Glen Subdivision are occupied by new owner-occupied stick-built homes. The property surrounding the applicant's, uh, the, the property surrounding the applicant's property is owned RA three, rural agricultural district. Surrounding property uses are residential to the south, vacant to the east, and agricultural to the north and west. The applicant's proposed use would introduce a very intrusive industrial use to the area that is completely surrounded by residentially zoned property. This whole area is identified to grow residentially by the Davison County Land Development Plan. Staff has reservations with the request because of the location not being representative of where the adopted land development plan would recommend non-residential development to occur. Policies one, one-two, one-three, one-sixteen, four-two, four-three, four-eight, five-three, five-six, five-seven, five-eight, five-ten, seven-three, and seven-five support the denial of the application. Um, staff admires the applicant's, you know, um, admire the work, but this, we feel that just, this is just not the proper location for a junkyard here next to a, a platted subdivision, and we would, uh, recommend denial, um, based off of that recommendation.
Okay, any other discussion by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny the application.
Second. Okay, will you use your, uh, technology, please? We have a motion in a second.
I'm to adopt the resolution on statement of consistency.
No, we're not done.
Yes.
Only denial?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll adopt a statement of consistency supporting denial.
Oh, okay, gotcha, all right. Well, mine will clear out, so what am I supposed to do?
All in favor, favor of denying this, uh, rezoning? Say aye. Any opposed?
Yeah, I'm gonna come look at it and look to do it.
Favor of denying would be yes.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Motion?
Well, I got your motion, I got, or I didn't get your motion. I got your vote.
Mine does.
You should have a motion.
Okay.
Mine does it clear out.
I got, uh, all of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote.
Okay, your motion was denied to, for rezoning, same. All right, we'll move on to seven E rezoning request by Charles Wendy and Brandon Barrier in Reedie Creek Township, consisting ten point four-three acres from RA three to CZ RM one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we do have a request by Charles Wendy and Brandon Barrier to rezone property located in Reedie Creek Township, tax map twenty-one, lot two A, containing ten point four-three acres more or less. Said property is located on the north side of Becky Hill Road, approximately half a mile east of the Marshall-Birley Road intersection. Property is addressed as thirteen sixteen Becky Hill Road. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA three, rural agricultural district, to that of CZ RM one, conditional zoning, medium density district. And again, if you would please divert your attention, uh, to the overhead, so, the site plan or the site map, uh, this is just off of NC Highway one fifty along Becky Hill Road. Um, the property in question is outlined in yellow. The, um, the transcontinental pipeline, or I can't remember if it's transcontinental colonials, just back to the, uh, east side of this, this property. It's not contiguous, but it's, it's probably a mile back. Um, the applicant's wanting to take advantage of a new trend of, of campus-style development where you don't have to subdivide individual deeded lots. We, we, uh, if, if the board will remember, we made some changes to RA, RM one and RA, RM two to allow for this type of development, uh, several years back, and it seems to be gaining in popularity. Um, I, I'll turn the floor over to the applicant, once the public hearing's open, and they can, uh, explain their request further.
Can I declare the public hearing open?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Good afternoon.
So, what we want to do with this property is...
Sir, sir, your name, please?
Brandon Barrier.
Thank you.
Sorry. So, what, what we want to do with the property is we proposed a conditional zoning to put potentially ten duplexes on this apartment, or on this parcel, and we're planning on not starting the duplexes until you get back where it widens out. Then at the front, do some landscaping, so, you know, it's not as prevalent off of Becky Hill Road. Um, and the reason for this is we want to maximize the use of that property and keep everything towards the front as possible. You know, that way we don't have to go with the state-required DOT requirements. But we, we have approached DOT and got access for a driveway going in there, and we plan on meeting the zoning requirements as far as the gravel road stuff and into that effect. Um, there is the trailer parks up towards one fifty, as well as some apartment and, um, um, apartment areas to the, back towards one fifty, and then on the other side of it, if you're looking at the screen to the left-hand side, it was approved to build a lot of the, um, I guess it's the slab homes down the street, so we're just trying to take advantage of it and use the land to, you know, benefit us a little more than just farmland.
Any questions for Mr. Barrier?
No, sir.
All right.
All right, thank you.
If you don't mind, have a seat there, Mr. Crook. Well, I'm sorry, hang on. Anybody, uh, wishing to speak in favor or against, please come forward. Come forward, please, sir. Sorry about that, I almost missed that step. I was trying to keep up with my technology here.
Yeah, my name's, uh, Dan Tussi.
Hey, Dan.
I got, my mother-in-law, she owns the land, the two F lot behind it. She's got a right-of-way to it, through, through the, back to it. And, uh, she disapproves of it. She's bedridden now at this time, and I'm just here for her. And, I mean, if it's gonna be apartments or stuff like that, she, she would just like to do something different, I mean, if, if possible. I mean, I don't know what to be, but we was told it was just gonna be a stick-built house there. It was one-time all-family property of one, of their, of RJ's daddy.
Any questions for this gentleman?
I, I have one, Mr. Chairman. So, you said you or your mother owns the right-of-way into this property?
It's supposed to be a right-of-way to the park property at the back, it's track two, and, uh, she has told me it was on the right side.
It looks like...
Base in the road.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tussi. Um, it looks like on this map, it's hard to read here, but they're showing a twenty-foot ingress egress easement that runs along this, uh, eastern property line. That's mapped as per the Davison County, uh, Tax Department, GIS. That's mapped as per the Davison County, uh, Tax Department, GIS. And if, if they put that on there, they found something in the deed record to, to warrant showing that on the, on the, uh, tax map.
And I don't know how that would affect her as far as getting to her property when they develop it or this or that. I don't remember on that.
I mean, the right-of-way should stand, so there still wouldn't be any issue getting to and from the property, so.
Does she have a house back there?
No, she lives across the road.
Across the road, okay.
Yes.
How many acres is that that she has in the back?
I think it's close to five acres.
Five acres.
Four point nine or so.
Okay, any other questions for this gentleman? Okay, thank you very much. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or against this, uh, rezoning? All right, see you none. I'll close the public hearing, Mr. Crook.
May I, may I ask one question of Mr. Barrier?
Yeah, sure.
Um, Mr., could, uh, please.
I'm sorry?
Steve Flattr, I'm opposed over two.
Uh, hang on, I had to open the public hearing back up. I done closed it, so.
I'm sorry.
I'll open the public hearing back up. Your name and do you live close to this or?
Yes, that's my mother-in-law too. I'm speaking in behalf of her too.
Yeah, do you live close to, to, um?
Well, I'm actually about a mile and a half from her.
Okay.
But, yeah, she don't, she didn't really want a bunch of apartments in that area. I mean, stick homes would be fine, but just a bunch of apartments, that, that neighborhood's bad enough now. And it's just gonna make it a lot worse.
Okay. All right, any questions for this gentleman? All right, hear none?
But I have one for Mr. Barrier, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or against this? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Mr. Barrier, we got a question here. And I guess you got one too, Mr. Crook, for Mr. Barrier?
Depends on what Mr. Shore's question is.
Mr. Barrier, what, what is your intention on how to get in and out of, uh, one, by one map I'm seeing, you're coming in from that bottom end, is that correct?
Okay, so we'll, we'll come in off Becky Hill Road and you see how that, you got the dark line through there?
Let me, let me get to that here if I.
Should be on that.
Are you planning on using this right-of-way? I guess that would be probably what your question would be.
The right-of-way, I didn't even realize was there until today. However, with that right-of-way being there, there is some ribbons there and there's plenty of land to stay off of that and keep that open. That's not, that's not a question. But we planned on using the center there because it, it goes down, it's not a deep gully, but the way everything runs, we don't wanna have to try to build that up to make a road bed. You know, we can, we can kind of get it down there and cut the ditches right and make it where it will be feasible to get in and out.
From the bottom?
Yeah, from the bottom, yes, sir.
Okay, so your septic tank's gonna be in front of these buildings and?
The septic tank will probably run in front or accord, I mean, that's kind of an exaggerated drawing till you get out there and, you know, tighten it up on ten acres. The septic tank will run probably in the front side and then towards the back. So the back land back towards her will probably not turn into a big deal. We're trying to keep it all up close, but not before that part, part where it spreads out. Now, I'm gonna pour that in concrete, make a nice entrance, so we're not dragging gravel on the road or not taking off. And that's the requirements of the DOT and the zoning.
Okay. Go ahead.
Two F back there, they were reply, referring to, is that lower elevation than?
I would say that as far as the ditch follows, it may be lower towards where that, the end of that green goes, but on the sides of it, it banks, it banks back up.
Well, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that it gonna be any watershed or, or is the sewer gonna be litching down in there there?
Well, I wouldn't suspect so because the way, like I say, the way the land is, and granted that, that drawing's a little big, we're gonna keep everything towards the front.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Barrier? Do you have one for Mr. Crook?
I, I would, um, so you, it's not your intent to block the twenty-foot easement that goes back to two F that is on the eastern property line?
Oh, sure. Matter of fact, as we.
You willing to put that as one of the conditions for this conditional zoning?
Yeah, if we need to put that in, I mean, because this is the first I've seen of it.
Okay.
So the easement will be fine and as we're doing and we've established the property lines, we'll clean the easement up. And that may be when I'm walking at the ribbons that I'm seeing, it may be twenty foot, you know, back from what I'm seeing. So we're gonna, we're gonna clean it up and make it nice. I'm not gonna have a mess.
Okay.
He surely wouldn't want to build on the easement because he'd have to tear it down.
Yeah, no, we won't, we, we definitely won't build on the easement.
Legally, you can't do that, but it's not, that's a private issue between the two parties.
Yeah, I wanna do a, a nice job here and make some nice buildings, something we can be proud of to have and, you know, I'm not gonna have a mess, so that's just not me.
Okay.
Is it possible, part of the conditions to make sure there's no runoff coming from that property? I want this other piece of property behind it?
That, that's gonna be, since Mr. Barrier's gonna be disturbing more than a contiguous acre with development, he'll have to file an erosion control plan with the state of North Carolina DEQ. There'll be silt fencing, there'll probably be some temporary sedimentation ponds and stuff like that to, to make sure his soil stays on his property.
Yeah, once, once we get it all set and the, the riffraff and the grass and all that stuff sowed, I, I, I don't see it. It's, it is a ditch, but like I say, it's coming back out there, but the whole land goes kind of like that. You know, it's, it slopes down in the middle. That's the reason the farmers haven't been mowing that section. But it's not as deep as it seems because we walked it, you know?
And, and did I understand you, Mr. Barrier, said you've obtained a DOT driveway permit for this?
Yeah, the surveyor has.
You've already have?
Yeah, he's talked to the DOT.
But, but have you got the permit?
I'm sure he's got it.
Would you mind putting that in the form of a condition?
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll get that.
Did you obtain a, a DOT driveway permit for that road access?
None of that's no problem. It's just a matter of obtaining it from Brad.
All right, thank you, sir.
We should require that already. We don't.
Yeah, well, that's why we do the CZs with these RM one requests because there's no road standards for the campus-style housing. So we want to see eighteen-foot all-weather surface so two vehicles can pass. Uh, we want to see some type of turnaround. He's representing the cul-de-sac on the site plan uh, so that fire apparatus, EMS, police can get in and get out. And, uh, the, the DOT, the fifty-foot paved hard surface at the front's a DOT requirement as well. So that's why the, uh, we, we asked the applicant.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm not sure how far that goes back if it's more than fifty foot, but I'm gonna make you a nice entrance, you know? Even if we have to go back that far with the concrete, I mean, it's just a matter of doing it.
This don't have anything to do with Mr. Barrier, but do we have anybody that follows through with that to make sure the cul-de-sacs are in so far?
We'll, we'll look at it. We'll, our, our office will go look at and make sure the conditions are met. Yeah, because the CZ is something that the county can enforce. If Mr. Barrier develops this and sells it tomorrow, the conditions go with the land so that everybody around, that there's somebody consistent, being the county planning department, who can make sure these conditions stay in force and effect.
Held accountable, that's right.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Barrier, is any other questions for Mr. Barrier? Hear none, thank you very much. Um, what was the planning board's, uh?
Planning board's, uh, request, I mean, the, uh, recommendation was to approve five to zero on, uh, July sixteenth. Um, the app, are you ready for my staff recommendation?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the applicant wishes to rezone the subject property to CZ RM one to, to place as many as ten duplex apartments on site. This application will take advantage of recent changes to our zoning regulations which allow for a campus-style development. All of the duplexes will be on the same deeded property as opposed to tr- traditional development that requires an individual deeded lot for each building. After consulting with the applicant developer, it, uh, was agreed to seek a CZ rezoning to allow conditions that speak to property use, road concerns as well as landscaping issues. The conditions are as follows, concrete entrance, minimum fifty feet, shrubs and trees at the entrance, i.e. landscaping, uh, gravel road that will meet the requirements and setbacks proposed by the, the county, eighteen-foot and so much right-of-way. Uh, and if passed, we will not be starting the buildings until the property widens. And to, to assist the, the board with that, the property, he's referring to where the property widens at this point, that effectively creates like a two hundred and fifty-foot setback on the very front of the property. Um, and he's also agreed to have a condition where he doesn't block the twenty-foot right-of-way and he's also agreed to get a NC DOT driveway permit for the road, uh, as, as, has been testified to tonight. The, uh, subject property's role and character being surrounded by single-family dwelling with medium to small-scale farming taking place immediately adjoining the property. Staff could make the argument that the, with the existing development pattern in the area, this project could be considered out of place. Staff keys on condition number four and the site plan that states that it shows no construction until the property widens. If passed, this creates a two hundred and fifty-foot plus setback for the front before the first duplex is constructed. In staff's opinion, this would effectively isolate the duplex community somewhat preserving the character of the existing road frontage. Combine this factor with the diversity of uses along Becky Hill Road, the transcontinental pipeline, the gas pipeline facility, manufactured housing and single-family dwelling, staff feels this project, uh, proposed project is not out of character. The proposed project is only one point two miles west of the South NC Highway one fifty intersection and the commercial activity in and around the Curry Town area. The, the close proximity to this commercial area can provide minor goods and services for continued development in the area. Staff would ask the applicant to get a DOT driveway permit, which he did. Um, and, um, said property is located in an area that's recognized by the Davison County Land Development Plan to promote residential growth. Statements six one, six two, six six, six seven and six nine and six ten support this zoning amendment. Staff can also make the argument that this type of development is needed in its proper location due to change in changing conditions in the residential housing market in the area. Staff feels the applicant's request is reasonable and recommend approval and that the board adopt a statement of consistency as such.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve or deny?
Can I, can I inform Mr. Crook real quick?
Yes, sir.
Lee, I noticed there's a water right there at the corner.
Water?
Yeah, do we have anything in place to say that, that that water can, he, runoff from this property?
Right here?
To contaminate that stream?
Is that what you're talking about up there in that corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I, I would fall back to the same, um, that this DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality will require erosion control measures that should keep every, yeah, every bit of it. If, once you disturb over one acre of ground, you have to file that plan and, and that plan has to be approved and then installed and they'll have state representatives that come out and make sure that they're held accountable for that plan.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions? Uh, we have a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, uh, we approve this with a statement of consistency.
Second.
All right. Everybody else, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any needs?
Did you get mine, Debbie?
I did. All of the votes are in and that motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay.
I'm just getting one good.
The zoning passed, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, they'll have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some movement, oh, go ahead, go ahead. Some move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? James thinks he's, he's voted on the wrong thing.
I think I was still on the.
The rezoning.
I got your vote.
Well, I changed it, but.
Okay, okay.
Put it on the right thing, but I ain't sure.
I did your vote and I did not beat Mr. Walker's second.
Well, I got tired of waiting on you to tell me mine.
I got the second, okay.
There she is.
Good deal.
I got him, all right. All of the votes are in and that motion.
Look at us doing good. We're getting there, pretty good.
Still early.
All right, nine A.
Mr. Chairman, um, real quick, did, did we excuse Commissioner Mizell?
Yeah, we did.
I'll make sure, I'm, all that technology hubbub, I got lost too in exactly what was going on and.
Can I change this thing up? We're playing about the aggravation.
I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody's done switched mine too, so.
I don't want to.
Mine's working.
Switched our chairs, I about fell out a little ago too.
Have you got another?
He's gonna switch it with Matt.
He can't speak, got things on here.
That's right.
It's probably ain't any better, so. Another one that Karen sent in, if that hadn't been switched, uh, the DSS board member about fell out the other day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Nine A, review of human resource policies, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Tony, come on up and I may need help from Adam too. Let me tell, let me kind of blank at where I think we are. I think some things have changed since we presented this item on Thursday morning meeting. I guess it's not last Thursday, but the week before.
Can I speak just real quick since I wasn't there?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, so when we, when I was watching the video, uh, it was my understanding that policy language was gonna come up to totally exempt the employees of the register of deeds and the sheriff's office from the personnel resolution, which I totally disagree with.
I, I would as well.
And, and the, the reason being is, and it's, it's not totally political, it's not totally just this and that. I think the language that we had in it for the last thirty years that says it's up to the discretion of the register of deeds and the sheriff, the sheriff's a constitutional officer, it's up to their discretion, play by the rules and, and kind of do it as they see fit. I'm fine with that. The only problem I had is if they said, uh, no, we don't want to do it, or if we said, you're totally exempt. Here's a reason. I don't know what we're gonna do in December. We have a sheriff's office employee who has ran, actually one, the commissioner's seat. When, uh, Trip gets up here, what can he vote on, what can he vote on? If we, as a board, totally exempt the sheriff and his staff, including Trip, and we come to vote on something and we've said that he is totally not an employee by that basis, does, does that give him room to just vote on anything, including pay? We just approved your pay scale register, uh, tonight in the consent agenda. Would he be able to vote on that? It's things like that, I have no clue. I don't know what to do. I like Trip as, as a person, but, uh, a- as a commissioner, I'm confused. On one side, I know that the legislature says that the employees of the sheriff and the register are not county employees. On our side, for what you do, we, we operate the benefits, the pay plan, uh, some of the stuff, but, but they hire and fire at will.
That's right.
So I don't want to take that from them and I didn't want them to have to sign a document, but I wanted them to, I, I just didn't want them to all be exempt.
Correct. Uh, you're absolutely correct and we are not exempting them from all of our policies. If you'll, if you'll look at the packet that I handed you, so based on last Thursday, I did add into the scope of the top three policies, which is the probationary period, termination of employment and the disciplinary process. I did add language in the scope that says, I'll just determine, the last part of that is determined by the sheriff and the register and per written agreement with the county. That was based on the direction that I thought that we received last Thursday. When I initially presented those policies, those three policies, it stopped at the, determined by the sheriff and the register of deeds, period. So what I did was I took language, our current manual, you could argue, based on the placement of the language, that we are currently exempting them from all of our policies.
You could read it that way because it's in the front of the book.
It's in the front of.
So when you, when it, those statement, what Tony did essentially is cut and paste, cut and paste, but the, in the front of the PR now, it says they're exempt from these policies. Well, those policies are hundreds of pages after that. So for terminations and disciplinary and hiring, he simply took that language out of that and just put it into those three areas because that's statutorily their domain. You know, for everything else, it's county employees and to.
So, so the language on page eight of our personnel resolution that said up to the discretion, that, that read to me as if, you know, we, we've had a great relationship, everything's been fine, they're gonna abide by, you know?
That's right.
It does on, it does on the ground, it works perfectly. I mean, they adhere to what, ninety-eight percent of what we do.
Really do.
But while we were cleaning it up, it was like, well, you know what? Somebody could misconstrue this since it's in the front. It's like reading a book and the very first page says, every page after this is set in stone this way, when statutorily their duties of hiring and firing and discipline obviously remain with them. So we thought, well, why not just take those, that little excerpt and put it on the termination policy, put it on the discipline policy? Not the policy for vacation time or something like that.
Well, yeah, so if you look at the, at the, one of the policies in the back, it is vacation. It says in the scope, this policy applies to all eligible employees, includes registered deeds and sheriffs. So they, they really, as I understand it, they cannot go out and create their own vacation policy that, then we have to, they have to follow ours.
Uh, well, that and well, and I disagree with you there. I think because they're.
Answer your second part of your question?
They don't have to abide by anything we do. He can create his own internal policies and procedures. Is that right, Mr. Turner?
I, I'm, I'm having a conversation with the school of government tomorrow morning about this exact topic, about what, I, I want to be able to hand, hand our new. about this exact topic, about what, I, I want to be able to hand, hand our new commissioner in the fall, you know, basically exactly what you just said, here is a menu of things perhaps that can or can't be voted, I'm not sure yet, 'cause I've actually gotten two different, two separate answers. When Fredo Brewstein was there, I kind of got one answer and that was a year and a half, two years ago. I think the new young lady there is taking a different position. I haven't had a chance to speak with her and I want to hear what is her position, what is she basing it off of, what is her underlying logic there? Um, so we'll have that information to come back to, well, from Mr. Kestner when he shows up in November for his orientation, um-
So, he, he just brought up a good point, so they can, by what you're saying, they can do their own vacation, if they wanted to add another week's vacation, they could.
They don't really have to show up.
I, I-
I mean, I hate to say it, we've got two judges here, they might, can be able to speak to the, to it, but, I mean, technically, because the people elected you to this, you're guaranteed that wage that the commissioners approved for you and your staff. Once we approve that, we can't pull it out without your approval and it's set, and then you, as long as you've got a deputy register, you only have to show up to the job. Now, I know you wouldn't do that, but, but, uh-
Mr. Chairman, vacation times is time and money and money is always, remember the basic rule, money is always approved by this board.
Right.
Only this board can appropriate money. So, for me, to keep it segregated easy, and I think there's some nuances to this conversation, but, um, Mr. Albright kind of is drawing a, a quick and easy way of having a conversation about it. Discipline and grievance policies and hiring and firing, that's their purview.
Yeah.
Everything else is county government.
Yeah.
For these two types of employees. Now, there's some everything else pieces of that, and like Adam and I have talked about Andrew, that you could go piece by piece and go dress code, for example. Who would enforce the dress code should somebody not be wearing, probably the Sheriff, or, or Michael would do it, Mr. Horn. So, I could get into that with School of Government, but for simplicity purposes, I do agree with Mr. Albright, discipline and hiring and firing over here for them, everything else is county employees.
Right.
And so, if that's the case, um, I hate to say it, they're kind of like a fifty-fifty, um-
No, I agree with you, money's one thing and-
Because, remember, you're on the- The other side of it, now that other side, proportion wise, maybe seventy percent of the book of business, 'cause you're in charge of the purpose. That's why when Mr. Horn wants to do something with pay or create a position, that become a few-
So, the vacation will be no different than Mr. Horn or whoever, I'm just using you as an example, giving his people a hundred thousand dollar a year raise each, you know, he can't do that because it's money involved, so, same thing with vacation, whether it's two hundred dollars worth of vacation.
And now, if Michael Horn doesn't want to show up to it, that's totally his prerogative, he's an elected individual, but we also have standards for his staff, I guess.
And on the ground, again, on the ground, the way this, you know, hiring and firings work, again, those two gentlemen can do what they need to do, but we work a concert. I mean, we've done that for years and have, continue to do that, um-
This, this really reflects what we're currently doing and all I try to do is bring-
And I, I think that's what it is, a gentleman's agreement to, hey, let's-
And that's what we have.
Let's play well, you can let your employees be a part of this-
Yeah.
And when it meets your prevy, but it's up to the discretion of those elected officials.
Yeah. And this just reflects really what we're-
And the only thing I was concerned about in all this was making sure these departments followed state and federal guidelines when it comes to employment and, and-
Always remember that, they have to, no matter what, that trumps their at-will pe- pieces of this.
Yeah.
I mean, federal guidelines, federal laws will always override their actions.
One thing that's different is every one of, uh, Michael's employees and the Sheriff's employees are sworn, sworn to an office, so, uh, well, not all of them, he's got admin positions that are not sworn deputy positions, but, uh, you swear all of your people, yeah.
I think the last-
Still don't relieve him from the federal or-
Right.
-guideline employment.
Discrimination cases or something like that, those are all apply to anybody, any employee.
And, and I'm, I mean, I want to be honest with you, the, the, so the scary part is, is, is when this situation doesn't work well, and when you have people choosing not to, uh, abide by these policies or procedures or this rule, and then we are tasked as the Board of Commissioners to hold the policies for insurance over the elected officials in, in their departments, when they act bad and the insurance company says, you know what, we're done with you, we're, we're-
And we, uh, HR, we come in and fix it as well with the insurance company.
That, that, you're right, that is kind of a crux of the, uh-
County pays for it.
The two hundred and some year relationship between sheriffs and, and their local entities that they, that they're born from, is this notion of, you know, you guys are the payers, potentially sometimes of decisions that get made, that's why it's behooves those gentlemen, you know, if you're not gonna adhere to HR po- county policy, have some, you need your own, and I think both those gentlemen do.
Yeah.
Um, and again, they rely on Tony, again, probably for ninety-five percent of it. So, that last little piece that got added from the Thursday morning meeting was about an agreement between the two parties to sign, you know, and talking to the two gentlemen, I think we're talking with some of you all, I'm not sure we're there just yet, so if that's amenable to the board to scratch off, I do like leaving in the scope piece for those areas of termination and discipline, that statement, so it's clear, you know, for those areas, we know, we're not gonna argue about that you're in charge of those, you know, rather than have it in the front of the book, so to speak.
But you have no recourse if he, uh, if either one decides to, yeah, I'll sign that the next week, say, no, I'm not gonna abide by that.
That's correct.
You have no recourse whatsoever.
Correct. They would be able to rescind that at any time.
Huh?
They'd be able to rescind that at any time, yeah.
At any time.
Yeah.
The day after, matter of fact.
That's right. Or the next time the problem comes up.
Or while they're signing it.
Yeah.
I mean-
So, I, I guess I would ask, that, yeah, as Casey mentioned, that if we could approve these with that last couple of-
Scratch the last piece about signing something off, but leave them in the scope of those areas that we talked about.
We, we just wanted them to know the importance of following the guidelines of, uh-
Can I be heard? Absolutely.
Come on up.
I, uh, when, when Tony started speaking on the changes he wanted to make, um, last Thursday, two weeks ago, whenever it was, anyway, he made the statement that he, he has a, a good working relationship with the Sheriff and a great working relationship with me, and ever since I became the Register of Deeds, I have depended upon the HR department to, in, in many situations to give me guidance. Uh, I depend on the county manager, I depend on the county attorney, Chuck Pryor was here, he, he and I have had many, many conversations, and Ms. Woodard. Um, this whole incident, uh, to me, kind of sort of got blew out the water. Um, I, I agree with the statement that, uh, Commissioner Elliott made in that it's always been per se a gentleman's agreement, but I just want this Board of Commissioners to know that the, the Register of Deeds, uh, as long as I've been the Register of Deeds, we have pretty much, uh, to a T, followed the, uh, and worked with the HR department. Even, uh, in some of the hiring situations, um, if I want to, I can say, I'm, I'm gonna hire Debbie and she starts tomorrow, and that's the bottom line, but I don't. I post my jobs, I give it time, and, uh, I, I try to follow federal and state guidelines to the much as I can. But when it comes down to the wire of, uh, per se, sign an agreement or a contract, I, I don't agree with that because it's always worked. And I understand that, you know, the liability of insurance and things like that, but even in speaking with the, uh, School of Government Legal Counsel, they said, you know, it's, and it's in the Register's guidebook, that it's, it's a common understanding that sheriffs and registers of deeds, uh, follow the guidelines and work closely with the HR department and the county. And there's certain things that he nor I can do unless we have the board's approval. So, with everything that's been said and brought up, um, if, if he wants to do probation for a year, or change it back to three months and, and do it, I'm fine with that, but the bottom line, in my opinion, that this all comes down to stems not to the Sheriff or to the registers of deeds, but the department heads and their supervisors who they have reporting to them to make sure that it went kind of to the performance of the employees that they're doing what they're supposed to do. And, you know, it's, it's, yes, it's up to the Sheriff and it's up to me and, you know, we're sworn, but I promise you, I hold my employees to a very tight ship and, um, none of them wants to go anywhere, so apparently, we're on the, we're on the right lane. So, it, it, in short, I, I don't want to sign any contract, but I assure you that my department, my office, works with and follows almost every guideline that HR has before.
Thank you, Mr. Horn, and the only thing, uh, we were trying to do here is keep the taxpayer off the hook for wrongful termination, so that's, that's all we're trying to do here. It's, uh, very expensive when you do that, and, uh, so anything else, uh, did you want to say something or?
I was gonna give you a motion, Mr. Tripp.
Okay, all right.
I got it.
You need to say something?
Yeah. Um, the paper that we got the other day, is that incorporated in here? The one that the Sheriff had to sign?
But ain't nobody gonna sign anything now.
No, we just scratched that piece out.
We're gonna scratch that part and just make a motion to move on, uh, I take it with, with just the new policy.
Does that in effect have the same impact as something that they would sign individually?
Um, well, it's, what we were gonna ask them to do is just, it's just, essentially it would say that, that they, for purposes of, of working with HR, that they, you know, here, here's all the policies that we plan to, you know, follow, you know, as of, you know, on a going forward basis, and then they would exclude specifics, you know, pieces of that, just so that HR would know, and then there would be consistency across the board, you know, that, you know, that the Sheriff's Department, for example, would, would always, you know, work with HR on a disciplinary issue rather than handling it internally. And so, you know, would, it, you know, as it turns out, um, you know, I think that the departments want to, you know, retain, you know, higher level of discretion and, and they don't want to do that, um, you know, going through and sort of listing on an, you know, excluding specific pieces of the policies that they don't, you know, plan to follow. And, you know, so what we're planning, what we're talking about here is just, um, sticking with what we currently have, except just being clearer, you know, now we're gonna be clear that it, hey, it applies to, you know, these three particular areas of the HR policies and it doesn't apply to the whole thing, it just, it's really just the, the areas that are widely recognized as, you know, per constitution statute as being the exclusive area of control of the, of the Sheriff and the, and the Registered Deeds.
One of the things that was in the document that we looked at, that the Sheriff, uh, Register was, had the option to sign, didn't have to, but they, they listed a bunch of stuff down at the bottom that the, the Sheriff would be giving up control over. Color the uniforms, color the cars, if they want to put in God We Trust on the back of the car, they can't do that, not without the Sheriff's okay, if they sign that agreement.
They didn't put that in there, did they?
No, I, I wasn't, I mean, we didn't, we weren't, we didn't have that kind of language in there, I, that may be, that may have been what the Sheriff's interpretation was of, you know, of-
I didn't see that in there either.
Yeah, I mean-
If you will get the document that we had last week, I can show it to you.
Maybe it came, maybe it was from the stuff from, was it Rockingham, were they doing?
Oh, no, 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 we'd have never done nothing like that. Ain't nobody gonna tell Sam Page what color car he's gonna drive, I can tell you that.
I mean, but at this point it's a moot point.
Or Richie Simmons.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, we're not, we're not going, I mean, I think the, the idea is we're, we're gonna drop that, and so, would, it's just a moot point at this, at this point.
You know, I don't, I don't necessarily have a, have a, a, a big objection to it, except it was written out in that document that y'all gave to us, and that was the one that you were gonna have the, the sign, the Sheriff sign, and you have said now that that's basically the same impact as the one that you're increasing in, including in this.
We're not including anything in this, we're going back to the where it was.
Got an agreement?
No, 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 no agreement. No agreement.
I, I'm just going stuff, I just see stuff on here, but I saw, uh, there was an agreement. What I do with it?
I think there was an agreement.
There was, right.
Withdrawn, right?
Right, we know we're withdrawing, right.
Withdrawn, I mean, that's where I'm, I'm here.
And, and he, any reference to, any reference in this draft, like, the, this probationary policy or, well, any, any of these draft policies that, um, Tony put together and where it says, um, you know, where there's any reference to an agreement or, you know, that, that they would, you know, a, a, an agreement that the Sheriff or the, um, Register of Deeds would sign, we're scratching that, uh, language.
This is just a minute, vacation leave, new hire probationary period, termination of employment, and, uh, progressive discipline.
We're gonna go back to the original language that I had on Thursday morning.
Right, right.
That's it.
Okay, so you're gonna bring that back, what?
No, I would ask that you approve or deny-
Prove what we had.
On something that we hadn't.
Sorry?
You, you gonna make changes to this and we'll sign it tonight?
Well, I'll just, yeah, I can bring it back, that's fine.
But there's nothing in there about the cars, eh?
No, nothing.
So, there's nothing in there about cars.
I'm not saying that there is, that there, about the cars. What I'm saying is, is that implied in there that that's gonna be the, the kind of, of duties that, that he's gonna give up?
No, not at all.
Not at all.
No, and, and in fact, it's, it's not asking him to, he's not giving up anything, in fact, what this language does, it specifically carves out the Sheriff's Department from certain policies, it's absolutely not adding any restrictions whatsoever. This is, it's just simply recognizing the, you know, the existing state law, just for clarity's sake, you know, for when, um, you know, when the Sheriff and the Registered Deeds have discretion.
All right, and they're not signing anything, so, we have a motion to approve-
In, in addition, I'm not done.
Well, I was gonna ask for further discussion, so go ahead.
Well, I was still-
I thought they'd answered your question.
Well, they did, the first part of it, but I had another one. Um, there's nothing in the scope in there that says that this agreement can be terminated with thirty days by either person.
There's no agreement.
Not doing an agreement.
The scope that we're gonna go back to, if I could read it for you, the, the, so-
Do what?
We're not doing an agreement.
Nobody's signing anything in an agreement, so.
Nobody's signing anything.
This, this, this- This applies to all of them.
It's a gentleman's agreement, 'cause you can write whatever you want.
You're, you're looking at what the draft was, I think I can help him.
No, this is just our policy, this is the county's policy right here, nobody's signing anything.
He's looking at what got brought forth from that discussion on Thursday. As of tonight, we're scrapping that last piece about the signatures and the agreement.
Is there any changes to the original policy?
Not.
Procedures? Any changes? Or we're gonna go back to what our old procedure was?
Yeah, I mean, they, they, there's gonna be a probationary period change.
I mean, you go through a couple of-
Okay, so you're, you're gonna institute those things?
Let, let me tell you a couple of changes that I mentioned on Thursday. So, if you look at the policies that you have in front of you, there's a, a new hire probationary period. Our current probationary period is twelve months.
Too long.
Gonna move that back to three months, but you can extend it to six, to nine, and to twelve. If you got somebody that's still here after twelve months, they shouldn't be here any longer, so. The idea is that we're trying to recoup and re, and reassert our employment at will component. Um, the termination policy, which is the next one, really, all it does is it takes that, the language that we currently have that says personal conduct-
Mm-hmm.
Is expands that, that's all we have in the, in the current manual, doesn't say anything else, just says personal conduct, that you've done something that results in a written warning or termination. All I've done is outlined in a list, not to be mis, misconstrued to be all inclusive, but there are things in here like falsifying documentation, performance, things like that. So, no, that really, the only thing that's changed is that I've drawn that definition out a little bit more. Um, grievance, uh, or the progressive disciplinary process, not really sure in practice that we've changed mu- anything in here, um, other than, um, terminations had to be approved by HR and consulting with the county manager. We better spell that out from a, a procedural perspective in terms of what happens, um, when you have to do a disciplinary conference, that, so those are the only, it's really um, when you have to do a disciplinary conference, that, so those are the only, it's really the only thing that has changed. It's not just a better explanation.
A pathway. A pathway.
That's right, that's exactly. So, using those procedures. Then, then the last two, vacation, um, you, I'm bringing those back to you. We already approved them, you guys already approved them at one point in time, but I had to change some language, because vacation, um, the payout portion of vacation indicated that it would be paid out at time, uh, um, if somebody left after they finished their probationary period. I just had to change that to continuous service, to remove it from the probationary period. So, kept it at twelve months, um, and then, um, same thing with, so a very slight change. Um, then in the promotions and interim assignments, I just changed, um, I originally put in if somebody got promoted, they'd have to complete another six months, plus if they had any probationary. Somebody could wind up nine months. I backed that six months to three months. It seemed much more appropriate.
But you wouldn't give a promotion if you're on probation, correct?
Should, we really should not be, no. And, and I haven't gotten to that policy yet. That makes people eligible, which at some point in time, then, I probably will bring that policy back to you. Just trying to keep it more consistent to what's happened.
Sounds like all good adjustments to me, so.
Chairman, you've, I've answered, they've answered the questions, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the policy as amended, with no signage of anything. All right, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And mash your buttons there to get some more experience there.
My button has been mashed since I put it on the first time.
See if it works.
And we voted yes for all of them. It don't go out whenever.
All right, if you'll give us a, did it, did it come in?
Get the clear.
All of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote, sixty, Rex.
Awesome.
I got it.
All right, so we'll move on, uh, to the next agenda item, Appointment Senior Service Advisory Board. Ms. Rockford, uh, do you have someone in mind for this?
Yes, I, I wanted to share with you that I, I looked at each one of the, uh, persons, and a wonderful list. I think we had five, uh, nurses, a lot of them retired, wonderful group. But I just happened to see, and I, I saw it even, there's one that we could use on JC PC. I mean, and I talked to, uh, Ms. Debbie about that. But I, I don't know if you looked at Mike Murphy. Um, in the course of reading through it, I thought, I was in high school with a Mike Murphy. Then it said that he graduated from East Davis in nineteen seventy-three, so that's him. That's a person that I know. Uh, you know, uh, he is a retiree from Paberas. Uh, he had a degree in gerontology, and he was a director of aging services. That sounds like-
Perfect.
A perfect person for this, this opportunity. Uh, Tisha, do you have any, did, did, had we recommended other ones, or is this new and different? And I, I would like to ask that she step up too, or have I just completely ruined everything?
Well, it's our placement, so it don't really matter what-
Okay, okay. Okay, have fun, have fun, okay. Is there anybody that you would recommend?
Oh, it's not me, but I, I should have given the word, um-
Did we, did we, did we pick Mr. Key?
Uh, Mr. Key currently serves on the Planning Committee for Aging Services, and also does, um, Sheila Ward.
Sheila Ward, okay.
And at the May twentieth meeting of the Senior Services Advisory Board, um, Ramon Grealva was actually presented to, um, the board, and the board unanimously voted him.
He was not on our current list to, to review.
Oh, he wasn't? I, I was gonna-
I don't think I've got that application. I went through everything that I had and pulled them all.
The defendant that said that the board preferred him, I'll have the email.
Karen, I'd say we would go with this one here, that you got. I mean, I'm good with that, and-
Could we come back? Could we come back? And, and, and check on this, because-
Make sure that I've got them all, because I, it may be an oversight, so maybe I'll put it back on for the twenty-sixth.
Could we do that? I'm sorry, I, I probably sound like somebody crazy.
No, 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 that's okay.
But I was just reviewing these-
Yeah.
Today before the meeting, and so, that's why I said what I said. Mm-hmm.
Has Michael Murphy been to any meetings or any doing?
No, 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 I haven't.
I would suggest we get Charlotte consideration him instead of having, letting other people decide who we can put on the boards.
Okay, okay.
So, that's wrong.
Well, and the thing about it is-
Yeah, that's all yes votes, and we don't need that.
Okay, we'll table this to the next meeting.
You are right, the first email that I sent out to them did have him on it. Evidently, he did not get put on the spreadsheet that I had.
It's the same amount, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's a, it's a gentleman that, um, Alita Cardenas had recommended from the Latino Association.
We have a Cambodian representative, and the board was seeking to have a Latino representative. And she, I had brought this to the advisory board at the May twentieth meeting.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not asking you who to put on, I just-
The reason I said that, Tisha, with all respect, and I have nothing but respect for you, but you showed that you were very disappointed. And I, I'm wondering why.
Well, we, we also need to give credence to my mistake, because it's been since May since we talked about this. And, and so, when I reviewed this today, I didn't have that information.
And it wasn't going to lie, but it was on a quiz, and that's, that's about it.
Where I can't publicly say, I couldn't in the closed session or something, about-
But your face tells the story.
Well, it, because-
Your expressions, I mean, tells the story.
Okay, we'll ta-
That might be a great selection. I don't know, but let Karen and Fred look at it. Fred's on that.
We'll table this to the next one then.
Thank you.
Yep, we're gonna table this, Deb, to the next one, okay?
Thank you, thank you, and I apologize for making such a blunder.
No, that's fine. I mean, it sounds like the guy's got good credentials, so.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I, I hadn't looked at them, so, uh, appointments to the Planning Board and Board of Adjustments. So, do we need a motion to table that one, or what?
I think if you send us the table, it'll be fine.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I, we received an application, uh, from Mr. Dennis, uh, Schoeff. And I believe, uh, he's, he's lived in Davidson County for sixty-four years. And I believe, uh, uh, just looking at what I've seen and researched, I believe he would make us a good appointment.
Okay, for the Planning Board?
Yes, sir.
If that's a, it's a selection, I'll second that motion.
Is that a motion?
It was a motion for selection, yes.
All right.
First, in here, sixty-seven years.
All in favor?
So, how do we do, I don't know where we're at.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, so where are we at now?
We're on item number two.
Two?
Well, no, it's three now. Hang on, I might have sent you the wrong thing. Three.
No, we're only gonna be able to vote one time on this, so.
That's all I voted. Uh, I got you. So, you, you need, you need the second one as well?
Did you get mine?
She wants us to do the second one at the same time.
I don't have the motion in the second yet.
I sent you the motion. That's for one of the positions, but we need to fill the other one at the same time. We got another one on here.
If we could do that, that, well, we could just vote one time, that would be great.
Right, what you got, Scott?
Could I interject? Um, a lot of, several things have happened in, in, over the course of several, a couple of months. And we actually, with the number of applications that you've received, we actually have enough room for two members of the Board of Adjustment. We have three individuals on the Board of Adjustment that have passed the eighty-year-old mark, and one would like to retire or resign, and after thirty-six years of service, the other is having health problems. And, and we're anticipating that we may wind up coming back to the board, and with this amount of applications, I wanted the board to know that we could, we would actually prefer to have two Board of Adjustment members. And if the board wanted, there's enough room for two members of the Planning Board as well for a second alternate. Um, you've already filled the-
That's within their item.
Yeah, and you've, you've certainly filled the Planning Board requirement tonight to, to, to replace, uh, Wes Kimbrel. But there is another position as an alternate on the Planning Board, if you wanted to do that. And there's, I'd like to have two positions in the, um, Board of Adjustment, uh, to help us out with, with these gentlemen that would like to resign.
All right, we've seen one on here, uh, what was his name, the surveying guy?
Christian Jones.
Mr. Jones.
Christian Jones.
But it don't show that he would be, uh, willing to serve on the Board of Adjustments.
That's correct. He, his preference is to be on the Planning Board. He's a surveyor, more familiar with development of land, and he would like to be on, uh, his expression is on the Planning Board, rather than the Board of Adjustment.
So, you don't think he'd be willing to serve on the Board of Adjustments?
I don't think so. In talking with him, I don't think that would be his preference. He would rather wait for another opening on the Planning Board in years to come.
All right, so-
We got it, we got an issue with the, um, Board of Adjustment then.
What about, uh, Rebecca Brown? What do you know about her?
I, I don't know Ms. Brown, and I haven't, I've only conversed with her through emails. And, uh, and I know that she's been in the county for a long time, for, um, for a long time, and that, uh, Ms. Brown is a finance officer, thirty-four years of living here, and, and certainly she would, she would choose either one. Um, you know, the, the thing about the Board of Adjustment is it's a quasi-judicial thing, where it's kinda like being in a courtroom, where you can only accept evidentiary stuff from a professional. You can't really have any kind of ex parte conversation outside. So, that's one of the reasons that, when we receive these, these applications, we had a lawyer apply, we had a, a planner out of Clemmons apply, and they already know how to do the quasi-judicial. Now, they've only been in the county for a year, and, and the one was seven months. They've moved in recently, so, you know, they, they don't know the county that well. But they, you know, that's the thing about the Board of Adjustment. It's a, it's a more particular and detailed, uh, and sometimes hard to, to, uh, specify, uh, process.
So, just so you know what we's gonna do tonight, Scott, we're gonna put one on the Planning and one on the Board of Adjustments. We're gonna come back with the alternates, after we get a little bit more time to review, and-
That'd be fine.
And, uh, so-
So, we're gonna go Christian Jones on the, on the-
No, he don't want the Board of Adjustments, so we'll have to put-
I thought you said we was gonna do one of each.
We are. So, we've already picked Mr. Schoeff on the Planning and Zoning. Now, we're looking for the Board of Adjustment.
And that's the one you said Jones would be?
He don't want to do that.
He would not wanna be on the Board of Adjustment.
He don't wanna do that. There's one you just said, Rebecca.
Rebecca, you got Rebecca Brown, who's been here thirty-four years.
Let's put Rebecca on there. Let's do that now.
Yeah, 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 good credential.
Yeah, and then we'll come back to you with the alternate. So, is that what your motion is, Ms. Brown, for the Board of Adjustment?
She would be an alternate for the Board of Adjustment.
Well, whatever he needs for the Board of Adjustment.
That's correct.
But you don't want us to vote on here, right?
Do it now.
Yeah, but she, she had to vote for both, because it's all listed under the same item number. Both positions were, so.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Cast, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna ask you a quick question, Scott, 'cause I'm trying to learn these things, okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the only problem I've got with Mr. Moore, he's only been here seven months.
Uh-huh.
If you look at his history, he's bounced from this place to that place, and that, we don't need somebody bouncing here and then moving on. That's, that's, I only, that's my feeling, not the feeling of Moore, I'm sure, but that's my feeling.
I understand.
I think he needs something that's substantial.
I understand, absolutely.
All right, how'd your vote come out? You good?
I've got, all of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote, uh, sixty, Rex.
All right, thank you very much, Scott. Thank you, appreciate it.
And I guess we'll get on the off-its later?
Yeah, we're gonna vote on the off-its, uh, Debbie.
Wait, you want me to put that back on?
Just put it on for a month down the road, and then we'll-
First meeting, you said, Karen?
Right. That way, we can struggle through a little bit more, and I don't know why, it seems like everything is, uh, piled up on us all at one time. All right, uh, Mr. Smith, you wanna lead the next one off?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, Major Louis, can I borrow you for just a second? And I, I think the judges are here, in case we need some of their input. As I understand it, and Major Louis, I'll, maybe I can do this in the Cliff Notes version by the time you're walking up here. The back entrance to the courthouse, uh, back there where the parking deck is- Oh, I'm sorry, the appointments for the Planning Board. We're on Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, we appointed the Board, that show.
I'm sorry, you're right.
We're on the Sheriff's Office now.
The back entrance, back near the parking deck, is, um, not been manning, uh, some time, again, due to some staffing issues we've had. Everybody knows about the hiring practice, or hiring going on, shortages going on in the Sheriff's Office. Um, so the request is to take a part-time, uh, position that's an office support position, and, or, and break it down into two, uh, part-time retirement, uh, without retirement deputy ones to man that back door for better security. It will cost a little bit more, but we can use some of the inmate telephone money to cover that gap. Uh, so again, it's no cost of the county, but I think the judges are here at the request of them, and they also wanna see it manned again, like it used to be in the back.
Oh, back side of the Superior Court Room, check where you're talking about.
Yeah, you need somebody there. Yes, sir.
It sounds like there's, uh, consensus already, so I don't need it. There's a whole lot, need to dragging this on out anymore. We've done enough of that tonight, so, uh-
Need a motion?
Motion to- I make a motion that we approve this, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any against? Any opposed? I'm trying to hit the right button here, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, sorry y'all had to wait.
Thank you.
You mean y'all was here the whole meeting for that? You need to come visit more often.
Y'all enjoyed every minute of that, didn't you?
Enjoy peeing. That's right.
Hey, tell Wendy I said hello.
Be good.
Have a good night. All right, here we go, item E, Approval of DSS Employee Referral Program.
Uh, Tony, I might need you as well on this one, and may need Trish, um, we'll see. Um, I think you, can I ask?
Hang on one second, Casey. Hang on one second, Tony. Did you get the votes?
Yes, sir, I did, and, and that motion carried by, by a vote that, um-
I just wanted to make sure, sorry about that.
She wasn't acknowledging getting that, she wasn't acknowledging.
Um, I just, before we get started, sorry, I just wanna make sure you guys have a copy. Um, DSS Employee Referral Program, they gotta hand it out to you for the meeting. If not, I have additional copies. Yeah, Tim got them out, yeah, no, which was great. I just wanna make sure they didn't get-
Let me summarize kinda why this is here before you, and Tony can talk about any details, if you wanna get into that with him about the program, or the proposed program. Yeah, we might need Trish as well, if you come over.
You need to come to the front row, I'm just in the back all the time.
So, we are in, I, dire straits is a good word, Mr. Chairman, I believe, and, um, Commissioner Wofford, if y'all can, either if I'm saying something out of line, shake your head, yes or no. But I'd say dire straits in our permanency planning, foster care essentially, staffing-wise, getting a little bit critical. We've had four termina, or, uh, resignations recently. With, that's, that area holds about what? Uh, you got fourteen allotted positions or so, and you're down to how many? Five live bodies.
Good gracious.
And so, um, we're getting kinda the place where the caseloads are going up. Is that, 'cause, you know, you can imagine, you don't have as many human beings, you got more peo, five human beings left to manage so many, you know, a hundred and ninety kids in foster care. So, the chairman, Commissioner Wofford, myself, Trish, Tony, we all got together one day, kinda put our heads together, what can we do? What can we do? What is on, the options on the table? And one option that got, um, kinda said out loud, and it's an interesting one that I thought, well, this deserves bringing it to the board, is you see this all the time with restaurants and private industry, where they will, they will give somebody some, not a bonus for just some, we talked about, we know, we don't really, we're not interested in doing that, but what about a referral bonus? Somebody refers Casey, the social worker, to DSS, and that referral person gets it, but they know, they produce something for doing that. Um, and we all kinda looked at each other and said, you know what, it's not the worst idea I've ever heard. Um, it's kinda interesting. So, what this does is write you up a policy, A, if you're interested. I mean, if you're not, it's a moot point. But if you are, these only, for right now, only these types of positions in child welfare would be qualifying. But any county, any county employee in the county could do the referral. So, if they know a social worker, it's essentially social workers in child welfare. 'Cause we've got some other areas other than foster care, you know, investigations that need, investigations that need some help, et cetera. Um, and then you got kinda the rules at the bottom. Uh, the employee would have to list the, the referring employee's name on their application. Uh, the candidate hired and start dates, I mean, the candidate is hired, and then it starts their employment, the candidate remains employed for a year. So, five hundred dollars is paid out to that referring employee day one upon hiring. And then, a year later, which they'd be in good standing, 'cause they would've made it a year, obviously, they get another fifteen hundred dollars for the total of two thousand, potentially. And if you flip over on the back, you see some people that are excluded. You got, um, you can't refer someone you met at a job fair, or some type of college event or similar event, uh, HR is excluded from the policy. Multiple employees cannot refer the same candidate, can only be one on the application. Um, employees may not refer an employee already employed with another Davidson County Department, and again, HR is excluded from the policy. And HR can keep track of this. We're only talking just a hint, right now, if we could get back to, out of the fourteen, if we could get back to double digits, let's say ten or eleven, the caseloads will come down, and then we'll stop. I think everybody would feel a lot better working down there. And so, it's not so much maybe about the ones that are here. I mean, money's always great, and you guys did a, you remember, as part of the budget, you helped this area and amongst others in DSS, but this is specific to this problem right here that we got going on.
If we, uh, go to a temp agency, and they find somebody for, we pay them, don't we?
Right.
So, what's, I'd rather give to our employees if they can bring people on board.
Correct, yeah.
It's a great idea, y'all.
And, and, and my staff would, would not like me in the morning if I don't mention this. For, for tracking the referrals, so if an employee refers somebody, right, right now, we have to do that manually. Our application doesn't support it being put on the application. So, what we are going to do, when someone comes in to sign an offer letter, we will have a short form for them to fill out that says if they were referred and by who.
Gotcha. I mean, we talked about opening this up for a lot of areas, but it, for that exact reason, I mean, it, contain it to this problem area for a moment. It's not as overwhelming for HR to kinda get their feet wet to figure out how to even keep up with this.
And we'll see if it works.
See if it works, that's the trick.
If it don't work-
If we, if we end up six months- If we, if we end up six months from now with fourteen people working in permanency planning, we'll know, uh-oh, we hit on something that works possibly in other areas.
Christmas is coming up pretty soon, you know.
It's, yeah.
I know.
And it, and it does provide an incentive-
Tony or Mr. Manager, one, it, kind of a side note here, wh, what's involved in adding this, so you guys don't have to do all of that, what's involved in adding this to our application, just put it, referred by somewhere?
You would think it would be real simple, but our systems don't support that right now.
Of course.
Sorry, I, I know you hate, I know you don't like me to say that, but-
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the DSS Employee Referral Program.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
If I could say one thing, I appreciate this very, very much. And I thought about calling Trish up to, to tell you what all we have tried prior to this trial. Uh, and we have tried things like creating our own, um, well, our job fairs, using our folks that need to be doing other things to do a job fair. We have done, help me, Trish, um, we've increased their salaries at different stages. Um, the other thing, there's one other significant thing that we've tried.
My brain has stopped working, I think.
Mine and yours both, I guess.
Uh, well, I mean, it's hard work to just get applications, so yes, we've done like lots of job fairs.
Zip recruiter.
Um, the boost in pay was a big one and that took us a, a long time to get there, right? And so we do thank you for that. Um, unfortunately, other people are also boosting pay and the work hours are not always the greatest when you're a social worker. So that's sort of where we're at right now.
Social workers, you know, once a month have to go and visit, you know, and it's not always in Lexington or in Thomasville. It's in Raleigh, it's in Wilmington, that, yeah, there's so many things that go into this.
Just a footnote, Trish has somebody in Phoenix.
Arizona, that's what I was fixing to say, just so the board member knows, our, our board members, we had somebody in Arizona that are caseworkers.
So we, our numbers have increased significantly, um, we were sitting at, mm, probably about a hundred and forty kids last year. We have over a hundred and eighty kids in care now. And it really is, um, mental health and, and drug related, right? Those are the things that are driving kids coming into care. We had a situation where a child was involved with, had fentanyl dust everywhere. So those are just, that's one, but the child, we have, um, a couple of kids in Virginia, we have a child in Tennessee. They're all in the highest level of residential treatment. And we have one in Arizona, we, we just took out to Arizona last month.
Can you explain real quick why that child has to be in Arizona instead of somewhere close, cause the commissioners may get questions about-
There's no treatment, um, available for that child that meets that child's needs in North Carolina. So, um, it took us, that child was, um, in the hospital lingering, um, for a really long time for us to just find a placement for this child. And I will say Partners, uh, cause our LME MCO is Partners, and they found that, this facility for the child and they, um, it, it'll be a huge cost, right, because to send a child out of state and then the treatment. Um, but they have a great, um, menu of, of services for this child. And that's why the other kids are out of state as well, they're high level, they're residential, um, treatment psychiatric residential treatment facilities. And they're the highest level and there're just not enough services in North Carolina for kids with these very high level of needs. And so that's why they're going out of state. But even in-state, I mean, we only have forty-some, um, local foster homes, we're working on that to increase that. But if a child has mental health needs and they go into what we call level placement and they have to go into a, um, uh, to a provider that can accommodate their needs, therapeutic or level three, you know, different levels of, of care. And those are all over the state. And so social workers, um, in the best case scenario, they have fifteen cases a worker. We're more meeting state standard, but as you can do the math, if we have a hundred and eighty kids and only five social workers, well, they, they don't have fifteen kids. Um, and so they're having to make individual contacts, um, monthly contacts with these kids. And you can see that there's not enough days, if you have to go to Leland or to New Hanover or Asheville, wherever you're going to, to meet the kid.
Hey, Trish, I wanna tell you, thank you, uh, cause this, this is a brilliant idea. And also the Chairman Yates and Commissioner Wofford, thank y'all. This is probably one of the best ideas I've ever heard of and, and thank you to your staff, that was very educational. Thank you for, uh, Chairman Yates for having her go into that a little bit more, cause I never knew we had kids in Arizona and Tennessee and stuff like that. That, that's crazy, so thank y'all for what you do.
And it'd probably, just to go back to Arizona, it'd probably take two days at least for a social worker to go out there.
I would've tried to fly out there and fly back on the red eye, but you can't do it in one day.
No, no.
And so we had a child, we, I had to send two social workers out, um, deliver the child and then they spent the night and then, then they came back, so.
It's a two-day trip at the least, you know, wow. The way the airports are three, but anyhow, go ahead, Commissioner.
One other thing that we've, we've done that's successful, but we still have to have more training. You know, we've set up our training program and our older ones, you know, that have been here longer are, are doing these training scenarios. And that just takes time to go through all that training. That's another thing that we've set up and done this year.
It's amazing, y'all.
We got a nice training facility, and that brings up another question, I've been meaning to text you all night, but trying to keep up with this new iPad, I can't do it. How many more parking places do we need over at the training center once you get your other folks moved over there?
Oh, I don't know, I know parking is a big issue, so, and I saw Dwayne left, so let me check on that.
Well, well, I mean, I, I read about it today, there's several spots there, uh, available, so I just need to know how many parking places you need, because-
I know when we have a training there, uh, it's pretty packed and we're, when we're full, let's say we were to fill our social work positions and they were at a training center, we would not have-
But if you was to fill them, but I don't know-
Yeah, we're working-
How luckily we'll get to that.
But I will try to get a number to see what was the-
A realistic number of what you think, is it ten more cars or twelve or whatever, so.
Yes.
Have we done voted on this, I done forgot?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Thank y'all.
Good job.
Thank you, have a good night.
Have you voted on all the clickers yet?
I have.
I did.
Yes, you have.
Did I, did I vote?
Yes, you have.
I have, hey Karen, yes, that's right.
You probably ain't got mine.
I just voted on something else then.
Thank y'all.
Got Karen.
All of the votes are in and that motion carries by vote, six zeros.
So you got them all, awesome.
That's great.
Mr. Chairman, stay tuned, uh, to the two members of the opioid committee, I wanna get your ears at the, at some future meetings about some of that topics that just got said. I won't go into many more details this mo, or this evening, but about fentanyl and some of these kids. Uh, so try to look at some options from you guys' perspective of something we can make and recommend to this full board, so just stay tuned. I mean, we got the funds, we, there's some help out there and a need that needs to be had, so.
Okay, nine F, uh, continued discussion on NCACC Legislative Goal Process. Who wants to handle that one, is that you?
We have got, the legislative goals are due by August the twenty-third. And we do have the form overview, and I think I've given each one of you one of those. Tax is asking for some assistance with, um, session law, twenty twenty-four dash forty-five, Senate Bill six oh seven. They've heard that there's gonna be some change made to it, that they would like some assistance and it was in David's email. In the highlighted section right there. A tax collector shall, in addition to advertising by this section, also advertise a tax lien by sending a notice of a lien in a conspicuous manner at the parcel to be advertised. I think they're worried about what their, what kind of, um, harm may come to their folks from that section of that legislation. And would like that to be considered by the legislature or move in that language. That he's heard that that may be in the works, but just wanted to make sure that it was taken care of.
And we had one about the court, right?
We had one and then, um, the, the Facilities Committee-
The Facilities Committee, just so you know.
Facilities Committee, I was at the Facilities Committee on the first. We've, um, learned or we think that in twenty twenty-six, a public defender's office may be coming to Davidson County. Now, it's not set in stone yet, but the way things are written right now, when these public defender's office come, offices come in, it is at our expense that we have to upfit the space.
Yeah, two million dollar expense is what they're guessing now.
To upfit the, the space at Superior Court Room.
Now, from what we've got so far, there, there's no statute saying that this is gonna happen. So that, as of now, so we wanna make this a legislative goal to keep this from happening.
Amen.
Or no unbundled mandates for the, a public defender's office.
Amen. I agree.
Mr. Chairman, uh, if it's appropriate at this point, I also have one. Um, so commissioners, uh, we, we just had a board of health meeting and this came up and I wanted to bring it to your attention. I think it would be a good one to add to our legislative goals. Um, currently, um, they're called sniffy nurses, please don't ask me, cause Lillian's not here, what that stands for. But basically, that's nurses that, um, the state gives us money for. They only give us, give, they currently only give us fifty thousand dollars for that nurse, that particular nurse. Which leaves the school, uh, making up the rest of, the, the school system making up the rest of that, which is either, depending on how long the nurse has been here, either twenty-four thousand or thirty thousand dollars. We have not had a raise from the state in twenty-some years, I believe it's twenty or twenty-one years. Uh, I, I don't know, I wasn't, obviously wasn't part of this when any of that took place. Uh, I would assume that the state, when they give the fifty thousand, that probably paid for an entire nurse. Uh, but as it stands right now, it does not. So, uh, I would like it added that we, that there's a request to go out to the legislature, uh, to pay for that entire nurse, uh, in its entirety. So, uh, an additional thirty thousand, so eighty thousand dollars, uh, would be the request.
How about just that they send them to the-
Uh, fully funded, fully funded.
Fully funded, that's fine, fully funded, that sounds even better. Uh, that would be my request to the board, uh, to send as a legislative goal.
And then she should have to miss the North Carolina Senior Retire Hero legislative request.
Yes.
Their priorities, so there are several priorities on that list and she would request that those be added as legislative goals as well.
Okay.
And I, I sent one out earlier this afternoon for y'all to consider and it could be something that we could do later. And I know, um, Commissioner Shores, Vice Chair Shores was at the NCACC conference with me and they did a presentation on treatment courts. And I spoke with Judge Terry before the meeting, because I let him know that I was sitting in on that presentation on Friday. And, cause I know he is very interested and really wants to bring presentations to the opioid committee and to the board to start a veterans court and a drug treatment court here in Davidson County. But one of the pieces that we learned out of the presentation from Friday is that, um, Chief Justice Newby, I've gathered with several folks over at the, in, at the state level and they are, there, the legislature is going to be considering putting these treatment courts back in to the counties funded by the state. So I, I don't know whether you all would consider legislative goals that, that the legislator, legislature fund these treatment programs? They were speaking, we had, with a panel discussion and there were several counties in there that had, New Hanover especially, the money that they had saved, they had actually went out and bought land for a new jail. But doing, implementing these courts, they've had it implemented for several years. Implementing those courts has saved them enough, enough money, they've went from an average daily population in the six hundreds to an average daily population in the four hundreds, have been able to shut down one portion of a jail and not build a new one.
That's awesome.
Because of the, because of the outcomes that they've seen out of these programs.
Sounds like we need to take a trip down there, the jail committee.
Amen.
The savings in, Mr. Chairman, the savings in Miami-Dade was almost four hundred and fifty million dollars.
That program was outstanding as well.
That packet I gave you, and the back of it is in that package.
And that's one right here.
There.
And, I mean, if, if you'd like, I could add as a legislative goal, but they have, their clerk has put me in contact with their, with their person-
That's amazing, baby.
From New Hanover, to try to assist us in any way that we can, because they're using opioid funds to turn part of their veterans and their treatment.
Somebody had to have to explain to me how it would save that much money, I just don't get it how it would save that much money.
I would need a lot more in-depth conversation.
I, I sent the information out to y'all earlier this afternoon and it could be something that we could do down the road. But, um, the, the presentation had a lot of data with it. And then there was a, a Ash, a Buncombe County Judge, Superior Court Judge, that presented on part of it, he had some really good data and I could get, get back to that.
Could we get that?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to have the data, because like I say, I'd like to see how you save money, you know?
They had a lot of really, I mean, they brought hard data and I sent that to you this afternoon, but I know y'all haven't had a chance to look at it yet.
Casey, you can crunch it first and then, uh, you and Tam or somebody.
I'm, I'm wondering if, uh, Mr. Shale, you know, has brought it up a million times in the, in the, in the, uh, jail committee about, you know, maybe the way things are going as far as decriminalizing some of the courts, I mean, that's, I don't know.
You're letting more people walk.
I don't know how well she would do it.
Right, that's me, I mean, that's, to me, that's the only thing that adds up.
Only way it would do.
They walking on the street.
I think the services that they're able to provide out of the veterans court and out of the drug treatment court is sort of like what DC Connect is doing. Sounds like they're getting the wraparound services that are really getting these people back where they need to be in society, so they're not re-offending. And they're able, and I think that they're doing almost like a diversion, that if they complete the program, it's, it's like a diversion, so it goes away. So it's helping unburden the courts and it's helping unburden, it's, they're identifying the folks that don't need to be sitting in jail because of mental health issues and helping them other way.
Debbie, you used a key, key phrase there.
What?
And I don't mean to disrespect you at all. I think don't get it. And I think that's where you need to, we, do our homework and find out exactly where that, that-
Now, I could see that working maybe on mental illness type, but on drug?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I'd love to see it work, but again, there's a, there's a lot of places out here that does drug rehab and most people-
They get out and run right back.
I've had several of my friends do the same thing, it's the in and out, you know?
I can get, I'll get the data from, um, Kevin on, from the judge in Buncombe. I think he presented a lot of, a lot of just data.
All these things according to the people pushing for work wonders, but when you go back and look at the bottom dollar, the dollars are not there. You can't tie them in, where two savings has to be reflected somewhere. So when do we need the, the end of, get them to the chairman or legislative goals and he-
The last one can definitely be left off, the rest of them need to be in at the NCACC by, by August the twenty-third.
August twenty-third.
So this meeting is what we have.
Now, let me tell you, if something like that's working, it's gonna spread like wildfire anyhow because it's working, okay? But again-
They spoke about another county too, and I'll have to go back and look, that where they, just models that are in place that are, that really seem to be working.
As long as they're working, like I say, now, a lot of them will kinda fall on the bandwagon, cause they think it's working, but-
I've got a legislative goal for clarification on, uh, some of the statutes regarding some of the issues we've talked about tonight. And as highly regarded through the NCACC, I've talked to everybody and the school of government on just what is, what's black, what's white? Where are we at? Because we're sitting here in lingo as counties, we need to know, um, what is and what isn't regarding some of the issues we talked about. And I, I, the only way we're gonna get that is from our legislature, um, so.
Now, what issue, I'm, I'm not sure I'm clear.
That, what's a county employee, what's not, period. Uh, regarding, because, you know, without us knowing that, how, how can we make right decisions here? Uh, based off what somebody can really vote on, what they can or what, you know, we're all just kinda throwing it up in the air and we don't really know. I agree, uh, our legislators gonna have to make the decision somehow, my bad. They gonna have to do something, and, and here's the reason, because we do hold the purse of the insurance. And, I mean, if you want it the way it's written, give them insurance, fu, fully funded, but don't let it, don't let the liability come back, so.
So how, how would that need to be worded, the, the legislative goal, how would that need to be worded? Define?
Defining what county employee is.
Yeah.
For a better definition?
And, and I don't know that that would clarify it good enough, you'd almost have to refine it.
I think it needs to actually say what we're meaning, which is define what a county employee is. It's, uh, especially, um, from the reg, registered deeds or sheriff's office.
Elected.
Elected officials. But it's, but it's honestly, by general statute, it's not all elected officials, it's only the sheriff of registered deeds. Because the clerk of Superior Court is, is an elected official, however, that does not fall into the same general statute.
And I mean no disrespect to any sheriff in the state of North Carolina or any register. But, I mean, the, the hard truth is this, eh, any one of those individuals in the state of North Carolina, uh, let's just say that their quorum was four, they could hire four commissioners and, and be the president of the county. So how, I know they teach us on ethics and they hold us to ethics, that just seems unethical, I don't know.
And somebody mentioned something the other day about the Hatch Act, you know, and I know we had a former- And somebody mentioned something the other day about the Hatch Act, you know, and I know we had a former employee here that, that he fell under the Hatch Act when he ran for office, and, and how does that fall into this picture?
And nobody can give us a, a definite answer. And, uh, you know.
Depending on who you talk to, that's the school's goal.
So do you know how to word that one up, or you wanna get with, um, Adam over there to figure out how to word that, that legislative goal up? I know.
And this year, they're doing something a little bit different. The legislative goals have to be submitted either by resolution or a letter that the board has given the chair authority to sign off on a letter once, once it's put together.
Give an authority to sign off on a letter.
Giving an authority, that's one, just as, I guess, a guarantee that this is what the board did instead of mincer. Because they, in the past, they just let us submit.
When does these goals need to be in?
They need to be in by the 20th, so that is.
So can y'all have the letter by next, uh, not by the next meeting, though?
By next Friday.
Right.
So I'll get, we'll get the letter put together and send it out.
Send it out to the full board and let everybody look at it. If anybody's got any opposition.
And then once I get the letter, then I can go in and start submitting the goals.
Is this consensus, Mr. Chairman, or do you need a motion?
Uh, I'll leave that up to Debbie. Just consensus that you have the letter by the next?
I don't do, why don't you do a motion because it is authorized, you can sign the letter.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve these mentioned, um, legislative goals and a letter.
For you to sign the letter.
Authorizing you to sign it.
I second that.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And hand it, basically.
I can't vote because I shut her down without thinking.
That's fine.
Motion to go in closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion.